Good morning and happy Monday everyone. Tara Doyle Anakin, the CEO of the Puyallup Sumner Chamber here with our Chamber Chatter Live Candidate Series. I'm here with my co-host.
I'm Luke Corum, I'm the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee. I'm also with Bill Corum's Puyallup Nissan.
Fantastic, and we are lucky, fortunate to have Mr. Curtis Thiel, no stranger to the Chamber community and to Puyallup. He is running for City Council District 1. Curtis Thiel, welcome!
Welcome everybody, thank you, and thanks Tara, thank you Luke for having me on. You guys do a fabulous job of just, you know, supporting the community, I appreciate that.
Oh, well hey, kudos to you for throwing your hat in the ring. It's no easy feat, it's, I'm sure done with a lot of thought and consideration, but at the same time, I think you're someone who is really masterfully crafted, a very well organized resume of great community spirit, leadership, business experience. So we're anxious to hear and learn a little bit more about that. So first of all, let's, well let's say hi to Patty Denny, who is our Chamber President Chair, logging right on, and we are anxious to hear any of your questions. But let's hear from Curtis on why he decided to run.
Alright, so, so for the last 20 years, you know, I've been super involved in the community. I live, I work, and I, I lead in our community, you know, and it's, you know, we look at the greatness that Puyallup is, you know, we look at the pillars in the community, which is the police, the schools, you know, the business district, you know, and the fire, so this is a fabulous place, you know, I grew up here. So I live downtown Puyallup in the core, I live right above Anthem Coffee. You know, so it's, you know, me and, so I've been married to my wife for 20 years. Dr. Maya Thiel, last week she just finished her schooling.
Congratulations!
So proud of her and all her hard work. She works at the Puyallup School District, and you know, it's for her, it's, you know, one or two blocks away. And when I think about Puyallup, you know, I went to Callas, which is just a stone throw away from, you know, downtown where we live now. And, you know, I remember parking cars, you know, you know, for the, you know, back in the day it was the Puyallup Fair, now it's the Washington State Fair, and, you know, and just, you know, seeing the economics of wow, look at, you know, people coming to Puyallup because it's a great place. And, and, you know, in the evenings I walk my dog downtown Puyallup in the core. You know, I see firsthand, you know, the, you know, the Pioneer Park, and, you know, the post office and the police station. And then, one mile away, you know, I live, I work at a place called Hard At Work Computers, you know, which I've been, I actually started that company 22 years ago. So, you know, I'm running because, you know, I love this community, you know, I give back. I've been on numerous, you know, boards and organizations, which I'm sure we'll talk about as this interview goes on.
Good, well again, thanks for throwing your hat in the ring, you're definitely a fabric of the community for sure.
Thank you.
And just so we know, you're District 1?
Yes.
And then, since District 1 has three people running, there's gonna be a primary coming up in August, correct?
Yeah, August, August 5th is the primary, so it's important, you know, it's actually the only district of the three, because we have District 1, District 2, District 3, it's the only one that has a primary. So it's important, you know, that we get out and vote, and, you know, it's, it's an opportunity to show your support for your candidates.
Yeah, ballots will drop in July, so we'll definitely make sure we circle around specifically in your race to make sure we get the candidates in front of all of you. You can ask your questions and make your determinations from there. So tell us a little bit about your background, and just what led you, I guess, to this next step in your journey?
Yes, yes. So, you know, the thing I, you know, I like to say is, "I live, I work, and I lead in Puyallup." So what does that mean? You know, I live downtown, you know, we, you know, we see it all, you know, we walk around the community, we're part of the community. But, you know, my business is downtown Puyallup, you know, Monday through Friday, I'm down in the, you know, the valley. You know, I work for a lot of the businesses, you know, we do residential support. You know, the, you know, one of the things I like to tell people is, "I'm in the trust and relationship business." I think it's important that, as we deal with technology, the company called Hard At Work, Hard At Work Computers up on 15th Street, we've been there forever. Before that, we were next to Puyallup High School. But the reason why I believe I am the most qualified for this position is, and I'm just gonna name a couple of things, and maybe later on we could expand on these a little bit more, is, I'm a past Chamber Board Member. I started a group in town, which is interesting, we actually had the meeting this morning, Service Clubs at Puyallup, and next month will be four years old. And what that group, and I'm the founder and the president of that group, is we have actually brought 15 different organizations that meet once a month, you know, it's, you know, the Rotary, the Quanis, the Lions, the Chamber, the Maidsstreets, the VFW, AUSA, you know, it's a long list, and, you know, like, you know, so every month we bring that together, you know, so I'm the president of that. I also started a group called the Young Professionals Group a few years ago when I was under 40. It was about promoting leadership, you know, and looking at the rising stars. And what we did is, we brought in, you know, two Star Generals, we brought in the President of, of Good Sam to say, "Well, what is the best practice? How do you become a leader?" You know, I was on the Puyallup School District Bond and Levy Committee for about a year and a half, looking at, you know, we need, you know, we need more schools, no questions. And I was a member at large, just, you know, what does that look like? You know, so, you know, the end result is, we ended up, you know, the voters moved forward, you know, six new elementaries, because the growth in Puyallup is moving forward. You know, so I have a long list of being involved and bringing the community together. And, you know, my full list is on my website, which I'll talk about later, so.
That's good, Patty Denny started off with our first question, so she just talked about a business-friendly council. What's that look like to you?
Yes, Patty's amazing. So one thing, the unique perspective that I bring is, I'm a local business owner here in town. You know, I spend, you know, my day going to different businesses, hearing firsthand account what's going on. And, you know, the, you know, one of the things I've heard from the restaurant owners is, "We're not business-friendly when it comes to permits." You know, it's, I think, what I think should happen is the end, we should start with the end in mind when you, when you look at the permit processes, the average business takes a year to open up in Puyallup. You know, and so, you know, we need to stop that, we need to, you know, look at regulations and make them, you know, user-friendly, and, you know, and, you know, and I, one of the, the one thing I want to add is, you know, I think Puyallup means, you know, somebody that's an economic development person, you know, that will bring business to Puyallup and, and help the current businesses that are here. You know, we need a plan, and we, and we need to work that plan.
Great.
And we also want to say hi to Cameron and Kyle for watching, Cameron Landry and Kyle Hardkey.
Kyle Hardkey is also a Board Member with the Chamber, so thanks for logging on, and certainly feel free to ask any of your questions. Um, so Curtis, Luke and I are both in the Leadership Institute, which is a great program run through the Chamber. You may have attended it or been a previous graduate. Um, but so leadership has really been on our mind the last six months. We talk about different leadership styles, what would you say your leadership style tends to look like?
Yeah, so, two words, action and results. You know, I have a very long, you know, getting involved in organizations, you know, I bring people together, I find common denominators, and then, you know, we move forward on those ideas. You know, I was just throwing out another thing, I was President for a year and a half of the Downtown Puyallup condo association. It's $11 million, 37 units, is, you know, is finding, you know, what everybody wants, you know, and moving forward. You know, I listen to people, I'm out in the community, I talk to people, you know, I will listen to all ideas, I'll sit down with anybody, and, you know, even in the last probably two, three years, I've sat down with 70 different people in the community or leaders to find out what's important, and then take, you know, grabbing all those ideas and moving those ideas forward, because there is some great ideas that out there that, for, you know, that we need to move forward.
Yep.
There's a second part of that question that Patty had about property rights, and I was just trying to answer it. So it said, "How are you gonna keep the council business-friendly, and what are your thoughts on the citizens' property rights?", question mark.
Yeah, property rights is, if you, you know, if you, property rights is, it's, you know, if you bought the land, you own the land, it's, you know, it should be your rights. And, you know, I'm a big proponent of, you know, it's the citizen's right to own the land, and it, you know, do, you know, for the most part, I mean, there's some exceptions to the rule, but it's, you know, it's, you know, it's your land, right? I don't really want somebody taking your land. But, but on the other flip side is, you know, I'm a big proponent of, you know, nobody's above the law, and that laws, you know, need to be enforced and followed.
Oh, good, and Daryl Rua checked in, said, "Looking good Curtis," so.
Yes.
Looking good Curtis, looking good, may have had a few outfit changes today, right?
Yeah, still working on it, so.
Monday afternoon.
Yes.
Excellent, so, um, let's talk also a little bit about what some of the, what are some of the more important issues to you in your campaign?
Yes, so I'm running on two or three things, the top two, right, is safe neighborhoods. You know, I believe, you know, the seniors should be able to walk to Safeway at night and feel safe. You know, I believe, you know, I should be able to, you know, walk in the neighborhoods and feel safe. You know, whether we're, you know, families are going to the parks, whether we're, you know, walking on the river trail, is safety is number one, but I'm gonna expand that a little bit more is, you know, we look at sidewalks, you know, we look at our seniors, everybody should feel safe, especially the people that are paying the taxes. You know, number one is, you know, that, you know, we all feel safe, and, you know, I'll expand some more on that, I'm trying another question, then my other thing I'm running for is common sense leadership. You know, it's, it's, so what does that mean in English, right? Is, you know, I look at all the lawsuits that we're doing in the city of Puyallup, you know, it's like, and I've talked to people, it's like, "Why didn't you just sit down with that party?" And I think that we could have resolved that, you know, without getting the intern, the attorneys involved. So it's, you know, it's being smart about government, and, you know, really the best uses of our tax dollars is that the individual citizens get to keep as much tax dollars at their house, you know, that's what I'm about.
So you mentioned you, you do a lot of walking around here.
I do, yes.
What kind of dog do you have? You mentioned you have a dog.
Yeah, I do have a dog.
What breed?
Very, very doggy.
Yeah, so, and it's, it's neat living downtown Puyallup, it's, so I have, you know, a three-pound dog, and I'm sure people, you know, usually I'm out walking my dog at nine, 10 o'clock at night.
Too much than mine.
It's, it's, it's a Maltese, you know, it's a white dog, and people honk at me and, you know, wave as I'm out walking around. But it's cool to, you know, walk through the farmer's market, you know, to see that, or to be out when the concerts in the parks going on. Because, so we live above Anthem Coffee, and if I open my window at night, you know, we can hear the concerts in the park going on.
Oh, nice.
So it's, but it's nice that, you know, we have a friendly town, you know, and it's nice that I can walk, but I see a lot, and, you know, that's the thing, when people talk about, you know, Puyallup, you know, Puyallup is a great place to live and work, and, yeah, there's some small things that we need to, you know, address and move forward, but I, I love living here, and I've been here for a long time.
What's your favorite event that Downtown Puyallup has all summer?
Oh, you know what, that's an easy one, is the Puyallup Main Streets Farmer's Market. You know, we go there, you know, most Saturdays, you know, to get, you know, get the bread, get flowers, and bring them back, and eat the pastries, and, and I'm excited, you know, Sean Manley and some other people, you know, have started these food trucks, which is truly across the street from where I live, and we walk out there, and Fat Zach's has an amazing pizza booth. We do have a lot of, you know, great businesses, so I don't want to just point out just one, because Puyallup is full of a lot of amazing.
And we also have the, uh, the 4th of July event we got from the Chamber.
Yeah, this will be our second year, I hope we'll see you out there again.
Yeah, that was their last year, and it was, you know, it was a great event, and the cool thing is, you know, it's, that's the thing is, you know, Puyallup is a great place to live and work, and, you know, and more and more people are seeing that.
Yeah, we're just brimming for opportunity, you know, we're so lucky here to be in leadership at the Chamber and collaborate with the leaders here. Um, it's, we're going to great places for sure. Um, so you have two opponents.
Yes.
Um, I don't know how much, you know, we're still a little early in the campaign, and I don't know how much you know about either of them. Um, one is an incumbent, so you probably know quite a bit. Uh, but then with the other, what have you been able to ascertain as some of them were defining differences between your opponents?
Sure, yeah, probably two things that would probably define me from both of them is, you know, being a business owner, you know, I talk to a lot of people, you know, I'm here Monday through Friday, you know, in the community, working the community. People walk into my office and just say hi, you know, I'm very open, I'm not, you know, I'll talk to anybody, because the, some of the people I've talked to is, I may not agree 100% on your opinion, but I bet there's 60% that we can agree on, and take that 60% and move forward. You know, I'm not, you know, I'm very open, you know, I'm, you know, been around. You know, one of the things that I use a lot is past, present, future. When you interview people, you know, whether you're looking, you know, to hire somebody for your business or somebody to mow your yard, is, you know, "What are you doing now?" And, you know, and I look at my resume, I, you know, it's, I do a lot, I'm out in the community, you know, more than, you know, most people in the city of Puyallup, because I love this community, community, but then if you look at what I've done in the past, it's massive. You know, it's, it's not like I just started showing up and giving in Puyallup. And I have a long history of not only being involved, but holding key leadership positions.
Let's talk about some of the awards you won, I feel like I've seen your name attached to many, uh, community recognition.
Yes.
Tell us about some of those. Some of them I know are fall under the Chamber too, which is very exciting.
Yes.
You're very aligned with the business community, which is, is certainly promising.
Yes, and a lot of times I don't talk about my awards, because I do what I do because I love the community, and it's about moving the community forward, but since Tara asked the question, it's like, oh man, so.
He doesn't like an award.
Yeah, so, uh, last year I won the John Porter Award from the Puyallup Sumner Chamber, which is the highest award that they offer for leadership and community involvement.
Well deserved, I hear, well deserved.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you, you know, the thing is, I mean, that award could go to probably 30 or 40 different people in Puyallup.
It's a generous community.
Yeah, it is, and it's, you know, and as time goes on, they will get those award. I was actually nominated the year before.
Yep.
Uh, and it went to Sister Pat, who, you know, she, you know, she does so much for our community. Uh, I was the, the Business Examiner 40 Under 40 Leadership Award, I won that. Business Person of the Year by the Puyallup Sumner Chamber, Young Professional of the Year by the Puyallup Sumner Chamber. And kind of a side note is, the Puyallup Sumner Chamber hasn't always been the Puyallup Sumner Chamber, they were the East Pierce County, so some of my awards fall underneath some of those other titles. So, you know, you know, and the reason why I think awards are important, it shows that the community believes in you, and that you're active and involved, because otherwise, we could all just say, "I do this, or I do that." But when people give you awards, you know, it shows that the community is backed behind you, and they believe in your integrity, your value, and what you bring, so.
So you're well aligned with the business community, you're a business owner. Um, you also run service organizations. Um, so let's talk about that other piece that's always very important to folks, and that's education. You also dabble in that a little bit, every day, with your wonderful wife Maya.
Yeah, no, great, yeah, no, and I, and it's, that's the thing is, you know, I, I bring a very unique perspective to the office, is, you know, because I do so many different things, is, you know, you know, because I care, and that's, but that's what we need on council people that understand the whole process. So my, my wife, um, I'm gonna drink a water.
Yeah, I'll have some water.
Alright. Um, so my wife is the, the CTE Director for the Puyallup School District. And before that, she was the Principal of Puyallup High School, and before that, she was a teacher at MRH High School. Well, for 10 years, I was on the Corporate Advisory Board for Business and Marketing, and then Education. You know, I was super involved, I was actually the Chair, I believe, for all 10 years, you know, which is working with the teachers, the business people, to bring the community together. Um, and then the other piece is, when I was super involved in the Chamber, I actually was the Co-Chair of the Educational Summit that brought, I believe, 300 kids to a job fair that was co-put on by the Puyallup Sumner Chamber. You know, you know, we had a keynote speaker, Jerry Moody was one of our speakers, I believe Mike Egan, another, you know, you know, great Puyallup name. Uh, I was on the Bond and Levy Committee for a year and a half, you know, looking at the feasibility of, you know, you know, we know we have this growth coming to Puyallup, what are we gonna do about it? You know, then, but also looking at the, the most important pieces, what are the voters willing to support? You know, we, you know, we're all being taxed all the time, you know, and our seniors, you know, feel the crunch, so we need to spend our, our tax dollars wisely. So we looked at this, it was actually a 35-person committee, which, you know, I was the member at large, and, you know, so we looked at all these, but the end result is, we passed the bond with 67%. The community believed, you know, what we came out with was a great result. And my latest, the last thing I'll add to the, the school district, I was actually nominated for the Golden Apple Award. You know, but I didn't win it, because there's fabulous people that do great work for our school, our school district. You know, I'm just happy to, to be a part of the process, you know, I know I was, yeah, I mean, so, thank you.
Yeah!
So you don't just run in political races, you also run in some marathons, that's a big feat, 26 miles.
I don't know where they're getting this information from, so. So me and my wife, been married for 20 years, I love her, she's amazing. Anybody that knows her, uh, in the, the school district circles thinks she's amazing. You know, so, you know, so, so we ran the Portland Marathon together in 2009. Uh, and that was, you know, the, the, one of the best parts of that process, we loved to eat in our community and be a part of, every time we would do a long run, that was 20 miles or 22 miles, it would end up at, "Where's the best place for breakfast?", you know, in that area, and, you know, we just burned thousands of calories, so you could eat whatever you want, and, you know, we've, um, also did the Portland Marathon, Half Marathon. Uh, but we, we love getting out, we love being part of the community, uh, so thanks for bringing that up.
That's a big feat, that's a big accomplishment.
Yes.
That's awesome. What else do you do for fun? You're campaigning a lot, and she just finished her doctorate, so I imagine there's, hasn't been a whole lot of fun to be had, or time to have fun.
Yeah, no, and the last, you know, my, my wife's amazing, um, you know, I'm the luckiest guy out there. You know, she finished her Masters, and, and then, uh, a week ago, finished, you know, the last piece of getting her doctorate, she'll be graduating, getting the, the official piece. Uh, so I've been, you know, being, you know, the best husband that I could be to support my amazing wife, is, you know, doing the dishes and taking care of the house, and, you know, walking the dog, and, you know, being a supportive husband. Um, so now that she's freed up, right now we're focused on the campaign, but, you know, we still take the time to, you know, we're both lifetime members of the VFW, members of the Eagles. Um, you know, we support a lot of our restaurants, uh, when they have their grand opening, we always try to be there to support local.
So Lisa Schultz has a question, who endorses you so far, Curtis?
Oh, uh-oh. So from an endorsement standpoint, uh, and I, and it's, um, I'm very humble, to be honest. Um, I have the Mayor, Bill, Bill from, actually the Mayor of Sumner's endorsing me, the Mayor of Ordin is endorsing me, the Deputy Mayor of Buckley is endorsing me, you know, a whole bunch of council people from the city of Sumner. Um, who else do I have? Actually, Kathy Yang, a Puyallup School District Board Member, is endorsing me. Uh, you know, the interesting thing is, it's a broad spectrum of people that believe in, you know, what, who I am and what I will bring to the table, you know, to really move the Puyallup City Council in a positive direction.
Yeah, I think it's a real testament, um, you mentioned leadership style has a lot of that listening component. I think that, you know, being involved in so many different associations, and then having that experience result in some type of recognition or award certainly speaks volumes, because I don't think you go in boastfully, loud and proud, just really trying to dictate. I think you're a quiet, helpful, collaborative leader, and I think on City Council, that could be very helpful. Um, often there are issues that lead this particular council pretty divided, equally, and there's, you know, typically kind of a swing vote there. But if you're someone who sort of naturally has a disposition that can come in, figure out where you could, you know, derive consensus, work well together to understand the issues, I think that style could prove to be very successful in the current council, which is great too. So, um, kind of getting ready to wrap some things down, but I want to make sure we address two issues that are very important, as voters have, you know, just recent polling has said that homelessness and kind of the affordable housing, housing options for this area are two very important issues on voters' minds. Can you tell me about what you would do to address the homelessness in this area?
Sure, yeah. So homeless, that's, you know, my, my leading statement is, you know, I'm all about helping people, I have a long history of helping people, is, you know, as long as somebody is willing to help themselves and be accountable to this community, let's help them. But where I draw the line is, if you, if you don't want help, and you want to do drugs, alcohol, and steel, you know, I believe that, you know, Puyallup and, you know, and we need to empower our police department, is that we need to enforce the laws, you know, to the greatest extent possible. You know, we need to encourage people, you know, this is a great place to live and work, but if you don't want it, if you don't want help, and you just want to do, you know, drugs and alcohol and steel, that you're not wanted here. But as far as, you know, a solution standpoint, because I mean, that's really what we're, we're here for, is solutions. Is, you know, I've taken the time to sit on two homeless, um, two homeless committees, sat down with, you know, multiple police, actually just, I got a tour of the homeless camps. Um, I got a tour, uh, you know, last week of actually a working homeless camp. Is, I'm, I'm about solutions is what I'm about, and it's interesting, it's all the different people I work for, and I have some great ideas, just by asking questions and listening to responses. You know, it's, you know, you know, we could all say we don't want homeless, or we don't want, you know, a certain organization in town, but the bottom line is, is it legal? You know, we have lawsuits that are going on, because we just tried forcing our way. You know, it's, you know, I've had some great conversations, I think if, you know, certain people would have sat down, or if people would have asked the right questions, I think that we, the city of Puyallup wouldn't be in the lawsuits that it is today. You know, one of the lawsuits we have right now is, you know, with New Hope and kind of where that's at, and, you know, until that has worked through the Court of Appeals process, that will not change, you know, for the next, I think, year and a half. You know, and it's really, you know, unfortunate the path that we've gone down that. So, you know, recap is, you know, get the right people together, you know, the thing that I bring to the table is, you know, I'm not only friends with people, as I have the right tact to sit down with people, and I'm respected and I'm trusted in the community, and that's what we need to tackle this issue.
Great, and then so that second piece to it would just be housing options in Puyallup. Um, affordable housing is on folks' minds. Inevitable growth heading to this area, what does that mean for Puyallup? And City Council often rules on, you know, sort of the rulemaking for the zoning, for the types of homes. What, what are your initial thoughts?
She's not easy. So, so we have, so here's what we know, is we know a million people are gonna move into Washington in the next 10 to 20 years, you know, we need to find, we need to find housing for them. But the, the other piece that's important too is, is all the seniors that are out there that need to find affordable housing. I am, you know, I'm all for, you know, taking somebody's, you know, house, and maybe, I don't know if it's the mother-in-law suite, that we could put up some of our seniors, right? I mean, because it's, because the current model doesn't work, and we need to find a working model, and, you know, I'm about being, you know, business-friendly, but the thing is, we need to make sure that the rights of the community, you know, are being respected, you know, so, you know, I'm not sure if I answered that question.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. And I see that we have Heather Bresser, one of our great champion ambassadors, also is it Milt Trembley that's watching as well? Did I miss anyone else?
No, I think we got everybody.
Good, well, I think we're probably nearing our close. Is there anything, any final words, endorsements you want to ask?
Can we talk about one other topic?
Absolutely, absolutely.
One other one is the Playstation, right?
Oh, to get to question.
That's a good thing to end on.
Yeah, so, so I love our Puyallup Police Department. I went through the Puyallup Citizens Academy in 2000, graduated, and part of that process is seeing, you know, that full facility, and, you know, the challenges that they have, you know, they don't have meeting space, they don't have, you know, places for, actually the officers are sharing desks, you know, the interrogation room is a shared room, and even, you know, the, the workout where the prisoners, you know, get to exercise is actually a shared space where they actually, uh, where they pull up and unload them in a garage. So, so we need, you know, I, I'm all for finding a solution, you know, to either expand our, our police station, but the thing that we're looking at now is, you know, the City Council is currently looking at, you know, an $88 million bond to move that forward, you know, and I'm all for supporting and, and looking at options, but I think, kind of how we ended up at this location or this spot, you know, I really like the example, the, the technique that the Puyallup School District, you know, they brought the community together, you know, they looked at it, they kind of looked at, well, what, what can people afford? You know, we know this is something, you know, because now we're at a, a place now, and even some of the City Council people, they're going $88 million, which is gonna cost everybody, the average house is about $350,000, it's gonna cost everybody a dollar a month for the next 30, 20 to 30 years. You know, it's, you know, so we need to find a, a working solution, you know, that makes sense, that will, you know, provide, you know, the, you know, great police that we need.
Okay, amen. Yeah, no, that's great, so.
Good wrapping, or?
Yeah, any closing, yeah, well, thank you, I see Renee is also, Gilim is tuned in, yeah, I hope you're doing well. Um, but, any final close for you?
Yeah, the final thing is, to get more information about me, uh, my Facebook page, @electcurtistheil, uh, my website, @electcurtistheil, my Instagram, @electcurtistheil. So there's, you know, my direct phone number, 253-219-6000. You want to have coffee with me, sit down, I didn't answer some of your questions, let me know. Uh, you know, you know, not only, uh, I, you know, you know, I go back to my past, present, future, as I have been involved in, uh, most levels of the community for a long time, I've been awarded by the community, I care about the community, uh, and that's, you know, the number one priority is that I represent the people in the community. You know, and that's truly what I'm about, you know, it's, uh, you know, I, you know, I think the last thing is, we need a plan for Puyallup, you know, nobody's talked about the plan for Puyallup, you know, what is our 15-year plan? So, you know, I'm here every day of the week, Monday through Friday, loving this community, taking care of it. I appreciate the opportunity today from Tara and Luke to be here.
Great, and also. Great. And also, yeah, no, thank you. Um, I want to let everyone know, we have landed on a date, uh, July nineteenth at the WSU Pialp Research and Extension, uh, Facility for our candidate forum. So we hope to invite all of the candidates in for some discussion and definitely want many of you, our Chamber friends, to come and ask questions and just get a chance to hear from all of the candidates. But meanwhile, thank you so much for tuning in to Chamber Chatter Live, the candidate series. We'll see you next time.
Bye, thank you.
Signing off.